Good morning, everyone. We're going to call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors and Redevelopment Authority to Order. Today is Thursday, March 1st, 2018. It is 8:30 a.m. We're in the community center at the Sierra Room at 851 East Williams Street and also streaming on the Internet. Could we have a roll call, please?
Good morning. Supervisor Bound.
Here.
Supervisor Bonkowski.
Here.
Supervisor Bagwa.
Here.
Supervisor Barrett.
Here.
Mayor Kroll.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. Can we call our good friend Louis Locke from Fountainhead, Foursquare, to get us started this morning?
...for each one of us, and be thankful for your grace. Lord, we thank you, and we pray and ask for wisdom for our supervisors. We pray blessing upon them and their families, and the people of our great community, in the great state of Nevada. We give you thanks and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Would you please join me in the pledge, will you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, withverver, in the name of the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit.
All right, we'll now move on to item number five, public comment. This is the time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of this body. We will have public comment at the end of the agenda as well. We will also have public comment beginning and ending on the redevelopment, and we have public comment usually during each agenda item unless it's not appropriate to do that, which it's usually okay to do, public comment. All right, anybody? Anybody want to ... again, here we go. Good morning. Good morning. Right, just come up and have a chair. Come on.
There we go. How's that? I live on Empire Ranch, and we were all shocked last week at the announcement of the sale, as I think probably most of the town was. I just wanted to say that, as a neighborhood representative, we really want to be kept in the loop. Nobody knew anything was happening, so ...
Neither did I, by the way.
I don't think anybody in town knew. We felt much better after meeting with the new owners on Saturday. They came and held a neighborhood meeting with us in the clubhouse, and I think many of us felt much better about it. Hopefully, it can be developed into something that's nice and not obnoxious to the neighborhood. We pay a lot of property taxes, and we want to be considered. We want to be included, and not be notified last minute. They told us they had planned originally to shut the golf course down Monday when they closed, and because we found out about it and said, "Wait a minute, at least we'll keep it open this summer as the plan develops." And my hope is that maybe we'll turn into something nice. It's not in very good shape right now. It has a bad reputation. We all understand that. But we want to be considered and not have things happen without knowing about it.
Well, I'm glad that they outreach to the neighbors out there. You know, it's a little difficult for the board or any part of government to get involved in a private transaction until the actual levers of government are being requested to act, to be pulled. But I want to assure you that, you know, when those levers need to be pulled, like permits or things of that nature, that there's a process in place to give plenty of notice and plenty of public input. And let me tell you, just I think it's pretty clear that if we can go overboard on that notice to you folks, we're going to do it.
We would greatly appreciate that and be included. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Anybody? All right, I don't see anybody, so we'll take up item six, the minutes of February 15th. Have you had a chance to look at them?
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Supervisors for February 15th, 2018, as presented.
There's a motion, a couple of seconds on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Okay, let's take up item seven. Any changes to the agenda?
No change to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Board members, any change? Okay, I don't see any, so unless there's an objection, we will take the agenda as published. We'll now move to the consent agenda, and from the consent agenda, we're going to pull items 11B and 9A. There are some disclosures that be made on these individually, so we will take up those individually. That's 11B and 9A. Any other matters to be pulled off from the board? Any member of the public want anything moved from the consent agenda? I don't see any. Okay, so then a motion's in the order to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 11B, and I'll do it, 9A and 11B.
I move to approve the consent agenda excluding items 9A and 11B.
There's a motion, a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. All right, let's take up item 9A now, then. We'll go to 9A. Let me start with a disclosure here, and I know there's a couple of other ones. This has a ... the counterparty in this is State Parks. My son is the Director of Conservation and Natural Resources. State Parks is part of the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. He has had nothing to do with this matter and probably will not, but I want to make a disclosure, and with that disclosure, I intend to participate in the discussion. Anybody? Anybody else? So we got a question. Go ahead, Jennifer. Come on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. Just a brief overview of this item. This is a request for approximately $81,000 for a grant from Land and Water Conservation Fund. It's a federal pass-through grant locally through Nevada State Parks. It's a grant pursuit that we typically apply for annually, provides a lot of funding for our outdoor recreation opportunities. It requires a one-to-one match, so for every dollar we request, we need to submit a dollar either in cash or as an in-kind request. As we've been here numerous times, we have over a half a million dollars of needs in Long Ranch Park, so we're trying every opportunity to leverage what money we do have. The board was so generous last year in the capital improvement program and provided us some seed money, basically, to try to leverage that money specifically for Long Ranch Park. And we have, you know, significant needs with our path system out there. We hear from the neighbors almost on a daily basis about their concerns about the path system, so this is an effort to do that. As a proactive approach, we hired Loomis and Associates to do an assessment of that pavement, to provide priorities, cost estimates, so we knew what the conditions were of the path system. We spent $8,400. That is available toward the match of funds that we have spent to do that. So we have a plan in place, and we have different options depending on available funding, and just trying to keep that moving forward. So you've seen several requests already. We were unsuccessful with the Recreation Trails Program, unfortunately, for this funding source, so we're just ... we're on Plan B, and we'll go to C, D, E, and F, and on down the road as we can try to get additional funding for this park.
Thank you, Jen, for that. I'm the reason this was pulled because I've heard several comments and concerns about all of that trail system over there, and I wanted it to be front and center so people understand that you're not ignoring them, but working through various methods for funding to accomplish what needs to happen, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, and if we are unsuccessful with this grant, we'll take the money that we do have, and we'll get it on the ground, but we're just trying to take every opportunity to leverage the funding.
Anybody else? While we're talking about all things Parks and Rec, I was at, of all things, I was at a funeral over the weekend here, and some people, a gentleman who used to play quite a bit out there at the parks, and they were all working on me about what has happened to our tennis courts out there on Centennial, so just take it for what it is. Okay? More money.
You'll see that on the CIP request coming before you next month.
I will.
Yeah, we are having some repairs from FEMA money, just so you know, at Centennial Park. We'll repair some of the damage.
Very good. Very good, William. Okay, all right, anybody else? Any public comment on this? Anybody? I don't see any motions in order.
I move to approve the submission of an $81,788 Land and Water Conservation Fund Program Grant Application by the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Department using approximately $73,388 in city cash match and $8,400 in city in-kind cash match for Phase One of the rehabilitation of the path system in Long Ranch Park.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. All right, let's take up 11 ... what is it? So 11B, 11 Bravo. This is the South Carson Street Complete Street Landscape Design. Ms. Raider, are you going to start us here?
I have a disclosure.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, excuse me. Okay, we're on. I apologize if we got ... who's disclosing?
I'll start first.
All right.
Pursuant to NRS 279.454 and Section 1.4 of the Carson City Redevelopment Authority's Policies and Procedures, I'm required to submit a written disclosure to the clerk for the record if I have any direct or indirect financial interest in property located in the downtown or South Carson Street redevelopment areas. I have a direct financial interest in the business known as Cafe Etta Dell's located in the downtown redevelopment area. I have submitted my written disclosure to the clerk, which I will, as required, and I will be participating and voting on this matter. Further, NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. Again, I have a direct financial interest in the business known as Cafe Etta Dell's located in the downtown redevelopment area. However, because this item will not benefit me any more or less than any other business in the redevelopment area, a reasonable person in my position would not be materially affected, so I will be voting.
Next, anybody else got one?
Yeah.
I'll do my disclosure. Here's here, similar to that. Pursuant to NRS 279.454 and Section 1.4 of the Carson City Redevelopment Authority's Policies and Procedures, I'm required to submit a written disclosure to the clerk for the record if I have any direct or indirect financial interest in property located in downtown or South Carson Street redevelopment areas. I have a direct financial interest in property located in downtown redevelopment area at 510 West Forest Street and 108 West Telegraph. I have submitted my ... or I'm just a partial owner. I have submitted my written disclosure to the clerk as required, and I will be participating and voting on this matter. Further, according to pursuant to NRS 281A, that statute requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. Again, I have a direct and financial interest in property located in the downtown redevelopment area. However, because this item will not benefit me more or less than any other person in the redevelopment area, a reasonable person in my position would not be materially affected, so I will be voting. The written disclosure pursuant to NRS 279.454 and Section 1.4 of the Carson City Redevelopment Authority's Policies and Procedures, I'm required to submit a written statement to the clerk for the record if I have any direct or indirect financial interest in property located in downtown Carson Street redevelopment areas. I have a direct financial interest in property located in the downtown redevelopment areas. That's my statement to read. You're up.
All right. Pursuant to NRS 279.454 and Section 1.4 of the Carson City Redevelopment Authority's Policies and Procedures, I'm required to submit a written disclosure to the clerk for the record if I have a direct or indirect financial interest in property located in the downtown or South Carson Street redevelopment areas. I have an indirect financial interest in the property at 1,000 North Division Street as two of my business partners have a direct financial interest in that building. I have submitted my written disclosure to the clerk as required and could participate in this matter based on this disclosure. However, disclosure number two. NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. The Nevada Commission on Ethics has opined that where a substantial and continuing business relationship exists, there is a disqualifying conflict. In my private capacity, I am a partner in the real estate brokerage firm, NAI Alliance Carson City. Loomis Engineering, the irrigation design contractor on this project, is currently a client of NAI Alliance. Therefore, NAI Alliance has a substantial and continuing business relationship with Loomis. Because a reasonable person in my position would be materially affected by this relationship, I will be abstaining from participating on this item.
John.
Thank you. My disclosure is that I don't own any property anywhere, except at my home. But I asked that this item be pulled, and the city manager told me this is going to happen, so I'll be pulled anyway. Actually, I wanted it pulled because the landscaping kind of works hand and glove with '25 and '26, I believe, which is on the Redevelopment Authority and then the Board of Supervisors agendas. I'm concerned because I just want to bring up and have a discussion about the fact that this design and the design for a sign in the downtown, or signs in the downtown, were apparently separated by inadvertence or by design to have the monies come out of two different pots. This money comes from one, and the other comes from the Redevelopment Authority money. It's of concern to me because we often get things piecemeal here, and I'm glad they're on the same agenda, but the RAC had voted not to go through that design process with full funding as requested from staff, which is $30,000, and I know I'm talking about a different item, so we'll get to it when we get there. I just wanted to bring it up at this point, and we'll have that discussion on '25. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, tell us what we're doing here, for the record.
Good morning, board, and Mr. Mayor. Dan Stuckey, City Engineer, for the record, so I'll just give a brief overview on this item. This is for landscaping design services for the South Carson Street Corridor. There's a significant amount of landscaping planned for that corridor, I believe roughly 150,000 square footage of landscape area. So this design contract will address landscaping, irrigation design, any of the hardscape or furnishing features that would go along with the corridor, and then also another component of this is they're going to do the 3D flyover and some of those illustrative plans that were done on the downtown project, just as a public outreach tool, and give a visualization of what the final, you know, improvements are going to look like to the public. This was advertised as an RFP roughly, I don't know, three or four months ago. Design Workshop, Loomis team is, you know, they have a proven track record. They did the downtown project, so they were the clear winner there, and there's been some multiple iterations on the scope and fee on this, and we feel that it's a very reasonable price for the amount of work that's being done.
Questions?
This might be a question for you, Dan, and for Nick. Since this addresses South Carson Street and hopefully a complete design, where are we with the state on the armory property such that this is a continuous design, so it flows?
Yeah, well, I mean, for the public, just so everyone knows, we're talking about the former Armory Property on South Carson, just north of Sonoma Street. We have had discussions in the past with the state. The mayor attended one where we went over and expressed our desire that, and we put a proposal on the table, that the state offer that particular parcel up for sale, and they could use the proceeds of that then to help fund their public safety complex that they intend on building. State Lands currently manages that property for the Department of Public Safety, and they declined that. However, there is an additional parcel that parallels that frontage road there that was absolutely essential to our South Carson Street project, and the state did agree to transfer that parcel that runs along the frontage road there, along with the rest of South Carson, to the city when the rest of the entire corridor does convey to us. So unfortunately, at this point, the state has declined to either develop the property, which we would be perfectly fine with, or to offer it for sale. So unfortunately, at this point, we've kind of run out of bullets in that gun, so to speak.
But since that other piece was deeded over or traded or however conveyed, our landscape is continuous going all the way into our downtown area?
Yes.
Okay, that was the question. So thank you for the complete answer.
My apologies.
No, 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 but at least we all know. Thank you.
Anybody else? Public comment, anybody? I don't see any. Somebody want to try a motion then on this one?
I move to approve contract number 1718-099, South Carson Street Complete Street Landscaping Design with Design Workshop for a not-to-exceed amount of $170,686 to be funded from the Infrastructure Tax Fund.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried with one extension. Supervisor Bonkowski. All right, that completes the consent agenda and the items pulled from the consent agenda. Let's take up item 13. Good morning, Mr. Dolly. How's the state of the assessed world today, assessor's world?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The assessor's office is doing awesome today, so thank you for asking. Dave Dolly, Carson City Assessor. What I'm asking today is, we are ... we went to ... let me rephrase. I'll start over. So yes, I'm excited, but I'm going to get going. We just contracted, or we did contract a six-year, three-flight flyover with Pictometry, and we're just now ending that first six-year contract. Chief Giomi at the time, and I went and got the first six-year contract, and he was able to get a grant for the first flyover, and then through the Assessor's Technology Fund, we were able to pay for the next two flyovers. That contract is expiring, and so we would like to contract for an additional six-year, three-flight flyover. The cost is actually about $7,000 less than the previous contract, and we are using the state GSA contract when purchasing or going through this contract.
Good morning, Dave. First, all three flyovers are of the entire city, correct?
Yes, sir, and the pixel size is actually different. So in the downtown area, it's going to be three inches, and then in the outlying areas where there's really no improvements or anything, it's going to be a nine-inch pixel size.
And then there's also a provision in here to have an additional flyover done after a designated disaster to get aerial photos to help determine the extent of the damage. And I had asked you if we could get wildfire included in that, and I believe we can get other types of disasters other than the ones listed in here included.
Right, as long as it's declared a disaster, then we can get it at a reduced cost.
Other comments? Dave, for the public, why don't you just explain what this system is and why it's important, and what you do with the information, or what the city does with the information?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Pictometry, what they do is they actually have a unique system of flying over. So typically, when you do a flyover, you're just looking straight down at the property. This particular software you have, they capture it so that you can actually look at a property at a 45-degree angle. So we're actually able to measure buildings, heights, lengths. We use it, the fire department uses it, the sheriff's department uses it, Public Works uses it. It's been very beneficial for our office because we're actually able to see all of the improvements in the back of the properties. So each, every three years, we get audited by the Department of Taxation, and we get written up quite a bit for the improvements that are done in the back of the property. Well, we're not allowed in the back of the property when we do physical reappraisals on those areas, so we're able to use these photos to pick up those improvements to add assessed valuation to the roll. And one of the other real good features is the fact that every year, the team from Pictometry does come out, and they actually schedule training, so if there's any type of new features on that particular software, then they train us how to use it, and if we have new employees, then they also get to benefit it. So they've been a really good company to work with.
Okay. Other comments? Public, anybody? Kind of way to look in your backyard.
We are not using drones, just so that's out there.
All right, all right. Motion's in order.
I move to approve city contract number 1718-140 for digital imaging and software with Pictometry International Corp. through GSA Contract GS-35F-0801N for a total not-to-exceed amount of $120,204.06 to be funded from the Acquisition Improvement of Technology Account.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Thank you, Dave. And I got the next one. We're finally going to get something in here to see if we can take care of that old program. Who was it that prepared that old one? Is that ... what was his name? Clark?
Mark Carter is the owner of ADS.
Yeah, all right. Let's take up item 14. This is potential contract with DevNet for property tax and CAMA software development for licensing for a five-year period not to exceed, total amount of $674,565 to be funded from the Capital Improvements Fund Software Replacement Account and Assessor's Technology Account and IT Software Maintenance Account. Why don't you just tell us a little bit? Laura, I mean, I know I read off a bunch there. If you want, if there's any questions, you want to fill in where I left off there?
I'm not sure where.
Well, in other words, a fundamental question.
You pretty much read it.
Not sure where I left. Sometimes I'm not sure where I left off either, but let me just ask the kind of the bottom-line question. There's a lot of accounts we're taking this out of, because it's a large amount of money. The question is, are we budgeted for these?
Yes, we are.
Dave, you want to tell us what we're doing now and see if we can get this off the books?
I can do that. Thank you so very much. So DevNet is a company that was selected, there's actually 13 of the 15 Nevada counties that were affected by the closure of ADS that have already signed with, and we are the last county to be signing with DevNet. And honestly, in my own opinion, I think this is the best contract out of all 14, so I think waiting last was probably the best thing to do. Originally, when we had, and I believe Mr. Von Schimmelman can speak with this, we had originally budgeted for the full amount. We figured there was going to be a huge amount upfront that we were going to have to pay in order to get this developed. Under this particular contract, it's actually spread out, the development costs are spread out over a five-year time period, and so the upfront cost is not as big as it would have been. We do have to buy some servers and some hardware that's going to be required for the development of it. The contract itself is very similar to the contract that we originally brought back in June. It does have, again, it's the development costs are over a five-year time period. There is a non-appropriations clause that was put into it. There are milestones that were put into it so that we can make sure that the company is actually doing and what they're supposed to be doing when they say they're supposed to be doing. The other really great thing about this contract, and this really is an awesome thing, is the fact that we have an option for a five-year renewal. That renewal each year is only a $500 increase. That renewal each year is only a $500 increase each year. And so, I mean, we potentially have a contract for 10 years. We will come at the end of five years, actually, I'm not sure I will, but the representative from the assessor's office will, at the end of five years, to make sure that we want to do the option for the renewal. This is something that the treasurer and I are super excited about. We understand that they've made great strides. The assessor's portion is almost completed, and what they've been doing is, they've been meeting, and they've been doing all the design work on it, and the design work is almost complete. There's a couple sections that need to be done. One is redevelopment, because we calculate redevelopment differently. We calculate it on a parcel-by-parcel basis and not a district-wide basis. So they kind of waited for us to come on board so that we can actually go and do that with them. The treasurer's office, or the treasurer's portion is having a little bit of problems, but we feel that now that Douglas County has, they have a super-strong treasurer and with Gale, our super-strong treasurer, they'll be able to actually get the treasurer's portion back on track to where it needs to be.
Just before we get some questions in here, I know we all know what's going on here, but why don't you just give a brief history of why we have to spend this money, why we have to do a new contract, and just so that it's all in one piece of record here, Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back in December of 2016, we were notified from Mark Carter of ADS that they had decided that they were going to retire, and they were giving us three years to actually come up with a new system. The advance, or ADS, we had actually been using their product for the last 34 years. So we developed it. It was strictly a Nevada company with Nevada counties. It served the clerk's office, the recorder's, I'm sorry, the recorder's office, the treasurer's office, the assessor's office, and a module in the sheriff's department. And so the assessors, because there were 15 assessors and treasurers that made up this, we actually went and researched it together and decided that we wanted to stick together because we figured that the cost would be better for us. And also, it's much better if you have people who actually use a system that could help you if you have a particular issue with it. And so we went to a contract, or we had a contract drafted up in June, but for some reason, things just didn't work out. And so we decided to check out all of the options. We went through an RFP process, and unfortunately, there were only two candidates, or two companies that actually applied for, or proposed, put a proposal in for the RFP, and neither one of them really met the requirements that we needed. And so at that point, we decided that we would go back to DevNet because from what we had heard, everything was working out really great with the other counties, and so that's why we're here right now.
Supervisor Eibach.
Dave, I'm not sure if you or Eric can answer this, but if you could go over the tentative timeline for implementation, you know, who's gonna be on board first, how this is all gonna work?
We actually have a representative from DevNet here, so he might be able to answer some of the questions. In the contract itself, we are scheduled to go live on August 1st of 2019 so that we can hopefully work out any of the bugs that may need to be worked out. I believe January 1st of 2019, they're actually planning on delivering the software so that at that point, we can keep working with it. I know I did, in the upcoming budget, I have asked for a little bit of overtime, and it's not that we're gonna have to run dual systems, because what we're gonna do is, when reports are due and so forth, we're gonna actually upload all of our data, and then we're gonna go ahead and run the reports in two different systems so we can check it to make sure that everything is calculating properly. But we are scheduled to go live August 1st, and as far as I know, there's not, at this point, there's no concern with that date.
Anybody else at the board? Public comment, anybody want to weigh in? You know, sometimes you think, you know, when you get these software changes, just plug a disk in and push a button and all taken care of.
They don't use disks anymore.
I use floppies. What's wrong with a floppy disk? All right. You want to add anything? Mr. Von Schimmelman, you okay?
No.
IT's all right? All right. Anybody else? I don't see any motions in order.
Go ahead.
Sorry. I pushed the button? Okay. I move to approve contract number 1718-011 with DevNet Inc. for property tax and CAMA software development and licensing for a five-year period with a not-to-exceed total amount of $674,565 to be funded from the Capital Projects Fund Software Replacement Account, the Assessor's Technology Account, and IT Software Maintenance Account.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing and all in favor, discussions in order, sorry. Supervisor Barrett.
Yes, I just wanted to thank DevNet for sending a representative. I believe that was part of the glitch the last time as we went through this long process. So thank you. We didn't ask you any questions because we're obviously further along in the process, but thanks for showing up.
Good comment. All right. Anybody else on discussion? Hearing and all in favor, signify by saying aye. Posed nay, carried. Okay. Let's take up the next one. IT, another floppy disk one of these ones? All right. This is for a couple million dollars? 2.5 million? All right. Laura, why don't you tell us what this one's all about, where the money's coming from, and if it's budgeted or not, then we'll have Mr. Von Schimmelman tell us why it's necessary to do these things.
All right. Laura Raider, Purchasing in Contracts. This is to approve contract 1718-075, a license and service agreement with Tyler Technologies for enterprise resource planning, land management, and utility billing systems and implementation services for a not-to-exceed amount of 2.5 million to be funded from the Capital Outlay Software Replacement Account in the Capital Projects Fund, and it is budgeted.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of the board. Eric Von Schimmelman, Chief Information Officer. So this project is to replace our very outdated enterprise resource planning software known as HTE. We've been on HTE for approximately 28 years, about 1990 is when it was installed, and it is no longer meeting the needs of the city. We did a formal RFP for this and had a committee that met and went through the, a whole process, did product demos with two vendors, and Tyler Technologies came out on top across the board. There was no discussion really after the demos were done. It was a quick email. Do we all agree? Yes, this is the way we need to go. So. Oh, the ERP system is our financial system that runs the entire system, city. So anything on our GMBA or payroll, let's see what else. We're also doing our fixed assets. Our contract management is included in this, utility billing, land management, building permits. I'm trying to think what other HRs on there. Let's see what else other modules we have included in that. That's the core.
I mean, for the laypeople out there, of which we all are, this is essentially our operating system for the city.
And we do have two members from Tyler Technologies here if you'd like to speak with them as well.
Okay, I don't see anybody in the public want to weigh in on this one?
I have a question.
Go.
My question is, since we don't know who the other company was that applied, and Tyler has an extensive travel expense scenario included in their contract, was there no one local?
No, there was not. The other company that bid was actually from Toronto, Canada. And their travel expense was higher.
A lot more.
Anybody else? Public, anybody? These are, John, Supervisor Barrett, sorry.
Well, perhaps this is for discussion. I'll wait for that if that's preferred.
It's up to you.
Okay. I just want to make point, the last two and this item on the budget, to beat my usual dead horse, are what you could call the city's road infrastructure for running its system. You just said that on the ERP, it also collects our utility bills. The other systems will deal with property tax and other items. So it's all about government bringing in money. But that's $3 million we're spending here, all pre-budgeted, all ready with money ready to go. I just want to make another pitch for finding money to actually service our city roads so that our people and our shockers are helped. We have to look farther ahead, and I don't know how we do it, I've said this many times, but we're good at collecting money. We ought to really work harder at finding ways to spend it on things that people get for our collection of the money. Roads is a tough one. I agree with Supervisor Bronkowski. This is not a situation where you like to do Band-Aids, but we need to do something about it, and I'm just gonna keep harping on this. Sorry about that. Thank you.
No, not a problem. And I sent a little note out to the rest of the board yesterday. I don't know if everybody read pages of the past on the Nevada appeal yesterday about how Carson Street was part of our road system 70 years ago, and the board was lauded, this board was lauded for not putting any stoplights on Carson Street.
Yeah.
How complete streets have changed. All right, all right. Anybody else? I don't see any motions in order.
I move to approve contract number 1718-075, a license and service agreement with Tyler Technologies, Inc. for enterprise resource planning, land management, and utility billing system and implementation services for a not-to-exceed amount of $2,500,000 to be funded from the Capital Outlay Software Replacement Account in the Capital Projects Fund.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Supervisor Barrett had discussion on this just before the vote. Okay, anything else? Hearing and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. Okay. Let's now take up the last software issue that we've got. Max, you want to come on up? This is for the court system. Court Smart Digital Systems, foreign amount not to exceed $288,160 to be funded from the court restricted funds and the administrative officer of the courts and the general contingency fund. Laura, you want to explain where the money's coming from again? I know I just gave it to you, but what's coming from where? Max, you want to do that?
Good morning. Max Cortez, Court Administrator. So the monies that are going to be used to fund this come from the district court filing fees. When someone comes to the court to file a civil case, a portion under the law goes into a court restricted fund. Those funds can only be used for certain things, and the audio/video systems fall under what it could be used for. In the justice court, when someone is cited for a traffic citation, a portion of those funds goes into a court restricted fund. And again, that law also says that it could be used for audio/video system. I believe it says improved technology or advanced technology for the court. The juvenile court is the same situation. They have an administrative assessment account, a court restricted fund account. So what we've done is, we have looked for the last two years for a replacement for our audio/video systems. These audio/video systems are used every day in court. They record, very similar to a YouTube video, they record court proceedings. We also charge the public, if they want a copy of the court proceeding, we charge them $10. So there is some money that does come back. It's not a huge amount, but there is some money that does come back. We are courts of record under the law. We have to record proceedings. Prior to our audio/video systems, we had court reporters full-time, added to about $173,000 a year. Those two positions are no longer employed by the court, so like every industry, technology has replaced workers, and this is one of the areas. We applied for a grant. We were hoping to not come to the board and ask for a distribution, but we did apply for a grant. Unfortunately, we did not receive the entire amount. We did receive some. Now, that grant has to be utilized by June 30th of this year. We've been working with IT for two years. We've gone to several conferences to find a replacement systems. We want to try to find something that is as good or better, and we're always looking for cheaper. And so we found Court Smart Digital Systems, and they are a very far superior system that we have, and they are less expensive. So we are short. That's what is the item before you, the contract, and we are short. We do plan to repay that money to the General Fund Contingency Fund. I believe it's about $98,000. And installment payments beginning in December of 2018 at $5,000 per month. And those funds will all be coming from the court restricted funds accounts. So that's where we're at.
Okay, all right. Supervisor Eibach, then Supervisor Barrett.
Hi, Max.
Hi.
And thank you for repaying the fund. I appreciate that. In about a year and four months, it'll be paid back, so that's great. The question I have is, this will allow the inmates to stay at the jail, correct? And when they're arraigned via video conference? So will there be any anticipated savings in the fact that they remain in the jail? Do you anticipate any monies that will kind of relieve the budget with regards to that?
Currently, we have an arraignment jail system currently with our current system, and so the inmates are rarely brought into the court, into the courtroom. So that's our current system that we have set up now for, we've been doing that for about 10 years. And this is no change. It's just the new system will still have that ability, and it's not only a cost savings, but a health concern. We've had inmates that have hepatitis C. We don't want to bring them into the courtroom full with, you know, the public and the staff and the judge. So it's efficient, it's safe, and there are other health concerns as well. So the same setup. The system also has the functionality for presentation for attorneys to come in and present their evidence during jury trials, teleconferencing abilities, which we do have now, so that individuals who are not able to come to the court can, through permission from the judge, they can call in. So all of those things that we have now, the new system can do, it's just it's a far superior system. They have more bells and whistles, and their price tag's cheaper.
And then one other question I had was that your district court fund cannot be used for maintenance. Is that why this has to be taken care of through the IT budget in the future?
The fund, I don't believe it can be used for maintenance, but that fund is also paying a portion to CASA, the district court. We do a distribution each year of $35,000 for their services, and we also pay for other IT computers, copiers, printers, whatever the court needs, so that we're not having to come to the city and ask for funds. I have been told that we are on the IT's replacement program, but in the past, we have paid for our own computers. So we use those funds so that we can have an ability to, for instance, the carpet project, we paid a portion for the carpet project. So we try to use those funds as the court, as the law allows, but also have a balance there because we also make distributions to, like I said, to CASA. So we don't want to expend all those funds. We need to have those funds available also for the specialty courts that are funded through grants, that if they're not able to be, continue to receive grants, we have to tap into those funds to pay for those services. So we do everything we can to not have to come and ask for the city to pay for things that the court needs.
It might be for fiscal on this question, because I was just trying to reconcile something. So the interim finance committee is supporting up to $98,965, but the actual amount from contingency, is it only 78,965? And you just have a $20,000 cushion in case something, because the motion only adds up to the 288.
Nancy Paulson, Deputy City Manager. The other $20,000 is for the cabling that is required. That will be a separate contract.
Okay, so is Fund 236 gonna do the payback to 101? How are we gonna effectuate the payment? Because I just want to know if in the motion, if there's any inter-fund loan that we need to approve, and the payback methodology, because I think it probably should be on the record.
I assumed it was coming from the general fund restricted, when you started paying the $5,000 back.
Sorry, that will come from the district court. Sorry. That will come from the district court, court restricted fund account.
A general fund account, not the 230, right?
Right.
I just need to clarify where it's coming from.
It's not the admin assessment.
Let's make sure we talk over the time here.
It's the court restricted admin assessment fund. District Court, AB 65.
Those are in the general fund.
In the general.
Yes. Yeah, so, you know, we hold those almost $1 million in restricted funds for courts, and so we'll just reduce that each year, and then it'll go into the unrestricted money of the general fund.
Okay, so, we don't need an interfund loan, but I think we should on the record say that it has a payback requirement. Okay, thank you.
Braden and John. Supervisor Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was fascinated by your reference to 70 years ago and the roads and Carson Street. And it led to a question, since you brought this up earlier, Max. You said that this is a savings of people that would have to do this. I'm sure there's no record of how many people you don't have to have because you're doing it this way. That's probably long since been ignored, but you do save people, don't you? Or do you know how many you don't have to hire to do this kind of work?
So, when we replaced, when we installed the initial systems in 2007, we had two full-time court reporters, and they stayed on staff, I believe, until fiscal year 2010. And then, they were terminated. And at that time, it was about $173,000 a year that we were paying for those two full-time positions, and that includes benefits. So, since that time, there's been a savings because we don't have those two positions. $173,000, almost 11 years, what, eight years ago.
Thank you for that. And that leads into my previous comments, which I understand software really does, or all of these systems really do, save the city money by doing it in a more efficient manner, which is, of course, what leads back to my concerns about how we spend the money and what we spend it on. We've stayed lean, as the mayor's pointed out to me on occasions through the recession, before I was on the board, and that's really great. So, thank you for your answers. It gives more light to my foggy brain about these things. I also want to say I appreciate Lori, because she digs down into this stuff and keeps me thinking about these things.
I also want to say that at the time that those two positions were terminated, we were in a fiscal crisis. It was very hard at that time to tell two employees that had been working at the courts for 20-plus years that, you know, they were going to be replaced with technology. It wasn't done. As soon as we installed the systems, we wanted to make sure that utilizing new technology was going to be efficient for the courts. So, it was done with that sensitivity as well. So, it was difficult, but it was needed, and these systems are very efficient.
I appreciate that sensitivity. I recall once years ago, when I was working for a newspaper, and the managing editor walked into a back shop and said, "Oh, we're going to go do a whole new system, and these jobs will all be gone," and all the people were standing there making up the paper that day. So, as it speaks well of you, thank you.
Anybody else? You know, lawyers are talking about history. I see Julie Cavill is back there. He probably doesn't remember this either, but you know, kind of the sign of the times. When the courthouse used to be at the corner of Musser and Carson Street, there was no ADA ability to get up on the second floor. So, when you had a disabled person who wasn't getting a divorce or something, or other court proceedings, the judge would just move, we'd all move out in the back parking lot, the whole court back there. And to say how old I am, I've been there. All right. Anybody else? Public? I don't see any. Let's see if we can take a motion on our last software one we're doing. Somebody want to try it? Supervisor Bagwell, go.
I move to determine that contract 1718-161 is a sole-source contract, therefore not suitable for public bidding pursuant to NRS 332.115, and to approve contract 1718-161 for the purchase and installation of audio/video systems from Court Smart Digital Systems for an amount not to exceed $288,160 to be funded from the court restricted funds, administrative office of the courts, and the general fund contingency. Additionally, the courts will pay back the money funded from the general fund by reducing the court restricted funds on a monthly basis, beginning in December of 2018, at a rate of $5,000 per month until the general fund is reimbursed in full.
Good motion, good second. On the motion discussion, hearing, anybody? Hearing none, seen none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried. Okay, let's take up item 15 Alpha. This is to adopt bill number 102 on second reading. This is with respect to the issuance of general obligation limited tax sewer bonds, the stormwater issues, an amount not to exceed $4,875,000. This is on second reading. Anything come in from first reading?
No changes from first reading.
No changes. Anybody want to weigh in on this issue? All right. Board members, we okay? All right, motions in order.
I move to adopt bill number 102 on second reading, an ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of Carson City, Nevada, providing for the issuance of general obligation limited tax sewer bonds additionally secured by pledged revenue series 2018A in the principal amount not to exceed $4,875,000 for the improvement project, plus the principal amount not to exceed $3,075,000 for the refunding project, if any, in the combined aggregate principal amount not to exceed $7,950,000, and providing for the form, terms, and conditions thereof, and covenants relating to the payment of said bonds.
There's a motion and a couple seconds on the motion.
That's, excuse me, that's ordinance 2018-2.
2018-2. Thank you very much, Sue. All right. Anything else? I asked for public comment, anybody? Okay. On the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried. Okay. Let's now take up the last item. We'll take a recess after we do the Duncan Golf matter at Eagle Valley. So, we'll pick up and start on item 16. This is discussion of possible approval of license agreement between Carson City and Duncan Golf Management at Eagle Valley for the operation, management, and maintenance of Eagle Valley Golf Course. Ms. Budge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, board members, Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. Just a little background on the site for the benefit of the audience, so they know how we got to where we are today. Carson City owns Eagle Valley Golf Course. It's two 18 hole golf courses located on the north end of Carson City. It's the city's first land disposal site created specifically for the disposal of reclaimed water. So, it's very important to the city's effluent master plan, and it consumes 25% of the total available reclaimed effluent, reclaimed water effluent to irrigate the course. Previously, the Carson City Municipal Golf Corporation, which was a private nonprofit corporation, operated the course through an agreement on the city's behalf. The agreement expired in December of 2017, and the city solicited a request for proposals for operation, maintenance, and management of the golf course. Duncan Golf Management was selected through a competitive process and was determined to be the most responsive and responsible bidder by the board on December 7, 2017. The board further authorized a temporary operating agreement with Duncan and directed staff to draft a five-year license agreement with terms consistent with the RFP and the proposal submitted and accepted by the board. This item for your consideration today is the five-year agreement for operation, maintenance, and management of Eagle Valley Golf Course between the city and Duncan Golf Management. The Carson City Municipal Golf Corporation notified the city on December 12 that they were terminating their agreement and were unable to continue operating. I just wanted to thank Duncan Golf Management for coming in three weeks early, ahead of schedule, and making sure that we had no lapse in service for the public. And that was something that they hadn't prepared for or financially even planned on, and the city is really appreciative of them coming in and doing that. And I have received so many compliments from the citizens of their willingness to be able to do that. So, I just wanted to take the time to thank them for that. The working relationship thus far during the temporary agreement has been great, and I've seen a lot of onsite improvements in a really short amount of time, improvements to not only the maintenance of the course, but especially the clubhouse and the care that they've made. So, I've been very impressed with their operation, and they've been great to work with so far. All of the changes that Supervisor Bonkowski and Supervisor Bagwell requested have been incorporated into your agreement. The changes were determined to be non-substantive. So, if there's questions on those changes, we can definitely talk about those today. I do want to thank Iris. She's been working very hard to make this agreement happen, so it's been great. And I apologize for the confusion on the exhibits. I wanted to just clarify what the exhibits are before we move forward on the terms of the agreement, because we have a lot of exhibits As, Bs, and Cs. So, Exhibit A is the Duncan Golf Management proposal that you accepted on December 7. Exhibit B is the map, and C and D are the inventory for all of the equipment and the items in the clubhouse that have been put together in cooperation with both parties and agreed upon values of today. So, the terms of the agreement, I'm just going to highlight a few. It's obviously a very lengthy agreement, so I'd like to just give the highlights for the benefit of the public. The scope of services includes operation and maintenance of approximately 319 acres to include the golf course equipment, infrastructure maintenance, pro-shop, food and beverage sales, public lessons, and promoting public play. There's a big emphasis in this agreement that this is a municipal golf course. It should be advertised as such, and you'll see that language throughout. The term of the agreement is for 57 months, beginning on April 1, 2018, and terminating December 31, 2022. There's an option for renewal for an additional five years after December 31, 2020, upon successful review and evaluation of the operation. And there's options for renegotiation at that time as well that are incorporated into the agreement. Duncan will acquire $90,000 of capital equipment for golf course maintenance annually. After December 31, 2020, Duncan shall contribute 10% of its accumulated net operating income toward capital improvements. This is contingent, of course, on the city matching that investment. If we're not able to make that investment, we can definitely exercise that option, but it's our intent to do joint investment in capital improvements and improve our asset at the golf course. The city will meet with Duncan at least once annually, but it will be more often, I assure you, to work together and to review compliance with the agreement, fees, marketing, outreach, course condition, schedule, capital improvements, customer satisfaction, and anything else associated. And, you know, we stand ready to support their effort and make sure that they're successful and for the benefit of the public. The city will continue to provide reclaimed water service compliant with the Carson City Municipal Code, and Duncan will provide a $250,000 performance bond as an insurance and maintain all licenses, permits, and insurance requirements associated with the operation. That's obviously not all the terms, but a general overview. And I'm available for any questions. We do have representatives from Duncan Golf Management as well as their legal counsel here, and Iris Yow from the District Attorney's Office is available as well for any questions.
We have some questions. If you're Supervisor Bonkowski, then Supervisor Ray Bell, then Supervisor Barrett.
I have a question. I just comment. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Parks, our property manager, the DA's office, Public Works, City Manager's office, for the many hours that we spent going through this and the multiple rewrites of the contract. And I'd also like to thank Duncan Management for making this process as easy as possible on us.
I concur with that. My question is on the replacement inventory. It's listed, it adds up to some $364,000 in what needs to be replaced, and the feasibility of that in 2018? Just a question.
I can just tell you that the state of the current equipment on site that we're providing to them is pretty atrocious. It's, most of it's beyond repair, and the fact that it even has any value is a bit of a shock. But they have really a good replacement plan in place. They're ready. They've already even sent over for review their first acquisition and least, you know, attempt. And, you know, they have a really proactive approach. These are professionals in the field. They know the best way to go about it. Obviously, we have staff with golf course experience as well, and we're happy to assist and help make those decisions and priorities. But, you know, it's not going to happen in 2018. So.
Thank you. And I again want to thank a member of this board for tripping a shutter in my mind, talking about divorce in the parking lot. Brings up an interesting image, especially in relationship to this. I'm really glad to hear how well you have worked with Duncan and how Duncan has impressed us as a city with their approach to this. By the same token, however, having gone through a divorce myself, I do know that you're in love at first and that things happen. So, as a matter of fact, I want to quote you. You said, "They've been great to work with so far, and I'm sure they'll be great to work with as far as the eye can see." But do you think the $250,000, the performance bond, is adequate enough, or in today's dollars, that may be worth less five years from now? Just a question.
I think it's adequate, because it would be needed should that divorce happen. You always have to plan for the divorce before you get married, right? And especially in Nevada. But it should be adequate if that would happen, and we had to bring someone in or a contractor to help us operate the facility until we could pursue another RFP and come up with a plan, or if there were other, you know, bigger decisions policywide for the city, that would be enough to get us going.
Thank you, and I add kudos to all. I hope it never comes to that. So, good prenup.
That's pretty good. All right. Anybody else? Public comment? Anybody? Iris, I have a question for you, and I want to echo what the board has said earlier about what a nice job it is. It was a well-written document. I could see a lot of different
Thank you.
areas where people inked in on it. It's a quality document. I do have, you know, lawyers can't get away with out saying one thing. If you take a look at 12.2.
On the revised?
On the, either one of them. On the revised is fine. Yeah.
It's the same.
That's for the approval of the rates?
Yes.
The way I read this is that in order to get a rate increase, all you have to do is submit the plan. You don't have to wait for its approval.
So, any rate increase that's less than 10% will be discussed with Jen?
Yeah, but the actual language says this. It says, and this is picky, "Any desired increase that exceeds the previous year's rates by more than 10% must be proposed to the board for approval before implementation." And so, you know, the way I read that is all you have to do is propose it. You don't have to wait for approval. It's the proposal that starts it. So, my only suggestion to you is, and it's a nit, legal nit, just say that you won't be able to, any proposed over 10% must be approved by the board. Plunk.
No problem.
Yeah, I think if you look in 12.2, I think it's there, right?
Well, it is, but he's just
He's just going to turn the sentence. It's better.
It's just, yeah, a little pickiness with the wording, which is fine. Just real quick, guys, on the table of contents, you may have noticed 46 through 51 are a little out of whack. I'm going to just fix that, just so you know.
It's a well-done document. Yeah.
Changes, yeah.
All right. Mr. Cavill, are we okay with that? I'm sure you are. It's what you're intended to do anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jim Cavill, on behalf of Duncan Golf Management. We're pleased to be here, and everything has gone great so far from our perspective as well. So, I want to thank Jen, and the DA's office have been great. Iris and Adriana have been great to work with, and I think we've attempted to address everyone's concerns, and we're ready to push forward. Tom Duncan's apologies for not being here today. He's a little under the weather this week and so unable to be here. But two important members of the team, Scott Wachowski and TJ Duncan, are here, so if you have any implementation or operational questions, we're happy to address them.
Anybody? Thank you. Got any stories you want to tell us? History?
None that you want to hear.
All right, all right. Anybody else? Public comment? Anybody want to weigh in? Okay, I don't see any. Let's try a motion. By the way, before you get on the motion, let me thank the board, the board members who helped weigh in on this. That's a real pleasure for, I mean, to see all that work done on this. My thanks to everybody who witnessed one, including our two board members that spent a lot of time correcting the nits and gnats and other things and substantive issues. So, go. All right. Motion's in order.
I move to approve the license agreement submitted as late material on February 28 between Carson City and Duncan Golf Management, DBATDS Golf at Eagle Valley LLC for operation, management, and maintenance of the Eagle Valley Golf Course with the addition of correcting the table of contents and the, right, I was getting there, and the correction to 12.2 read into the record by the mayor.
Motion, second on a motion discussion. Hearing Hearing not all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Carried. Thank you again to everybody. Okay. All right.
We've got some meaty ones today.
Moving right along, let's take a recess for about 10 minutes.
Yeah. Right along.[615.82]
I'm going to recess, Mr. Mayor. All right, we're going to bring the Board of Supervisors back to order, and now we're going to recess, and I'm going to turn the gavel over to the Chair of Redevelopment, Supervisor Aboud.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to call to order the redevelopment authority, and let the record reflect that we have a quorum, and move on to Item 19, Public Comment. Is there any public comment at this point in time?
My name is Masih Madani. I'm a recent migrant to this area. After living in Los Angeles for 45 years, I decided to get out of town and moved up here.
Smart move.
Thank you. So, I've only been here for about a year and a half, and I got to experience the nice weather we had last year. So, I was kind of surprised by the number of homeless and the issues revolving around affordable housing solutions. So, one of the things I did was I decided to focus my nonprofit on affordable housing and coming up with solutions. And one of the things we did was I didn't have any skill sets in welding. It's the one thing I didn't know how to do. So, I took an accelerated welding course at Western Nevada College. And six hours a day, every day, day after day, month after month, I welded and learned how to do that by myself, so that I can focus on what I needed to do. We started a project over there, and now what we're doing is we're converting shipping containers into affordable housing. So, we have a single container, one bedroom, one bath. It's 320 square feet. It cost us about $25,000 to make the conversion. These are very energy efficient. They are to code. They are fully engineered. I've discussed these with both planning and code enforcement. One of the issues I ran into and why I'm here is there is a section in the code that specifically says, "Metal storage containers shall be used for storage purposes only, and no human occupation shall occur. No alterations shall be made or allowed to the metal storage containers, including to but not limited to doors, windows, electrical plumbing, or connection of multiple containers. No storage shall be placed upon or above the metal storage container. Storage containers shall not be stacked upon each other," which kind of defeats the purpose and the goal of what I'm trying to do, which is to provide affordable housing to deal with both shelters for the homeless as well as just general public, those who can not afford their rising rents in this area. We don't have that issue in Reno. I've spoken to them. I've spoken to Washoe County. They don't have that issue. So, planning told me to come here and talk to you folks. So, I'm here.
Well, thank you. Obviously, since it's not agendized today, we can't really go through the discussion. However, I would suggest that, Lee, that we bring this forward at another time for discussion, because I think it's something that has to be considered. Housing is something that's on the forefront for us right now, affordable housing. And we're in various committees, you know, trying to work forward on some solutions. And you bring forth a viable option that we do need to discuss, but we have to go through it in a proper fashion.
That's fine. I'm more than happy to, you know, be on the agenda and come and talk to whoever that I need to talk to. I made seven copies of the PowerPoint presentation I'd like to share with you, so...
And I applaud your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, Item Number 20, Approval of Minutes, February 15, 2018.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Redevelopment Authority for February 15, 2018, as presented.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. On to Item 21A. Lee, are you going to take us through this?
Good morning. Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. This first item on the redevelopment authority agenda, and then there'll be a commensurate board item for this, this is on the agenda to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors regarding the expenditure of up to $30,000 from this year's current redevelopment revolving fund budget for downtown entry signs. It's on the agenda for possible action to design and construct downtown gateway signage in conjunction with the South Carson Street project, contract for which -- part of the contract for which you took action on earlier this morning. Just a little bit of step back on the background. So, this $30,000 was put into the redevelopment allocation plan. So, there was discussions prior to this year's budget last year. And this $30,000, really where it came from and why it's $30,000 was really was kind of a leftover amount from other funding for other projects that were identified for this year. But going down the priority list that was established, downtown signage fell on the list, and so some of the leftovers' funds, which happened to just be $30,000, got assigned to doing some downtown gateway signage to help direct folks to the downtown, identification for the downtown as other projects go forward. And then, as the South Carson Street project was going forward, I actually talked to -- I noticed that and knew we had the funding here, talked to them, knew the design was coming up, said, "Is gateway signage part of your contract?" The answer was no. I think probably appropriately, it's a transportation complete streets project typically doesn't include this type of signage in those types of projects. So, we brought this forward to the redevelopment authority to see if this was the appropriate time to include this funding for design and construction of signage. There's been talk of bigger signage. You know, you've seen the gateway arches in the past. You know, kind of the estimates have ranged from $350,000 to $500,000 per arch. So, this certainly isn't an amount of money that's going to solve that. That's probably a longer-term funding thing that we'll have to look at. At your next meeting in March, we're going to talk about the allocation plan for next year, and you'll have a chance to look at that as one of the -- to prioritize that and look at how we might be able to fund a bigger project like that. So, we felt that, you know, working with the Public Works and then Design Workshop, they talked to them, and we thought that for $30,000, we can get some sort of small monument-type sign, gateway signage, that might include some landscaping or other things around it, monument sign downtown this way. To be determined. It's definitely designed to be determined. That's the purpose of the contract for design and construction. And in talking to the Redevelopment Authority Citizens Committee, they felt that before they authorized this funding for construction, they wanted to see the design. So, the recommended motion from RAC, and it is as recommended in your staff report, is for to authorize the expenditure of $5,000 only, and only for the design of the structure. And then, we would have to bring back the design, and we'd come back with the request for the remainder $25,000 for construction of the sign. The alternative, I mean, as it was being proposed for design and construction, authorize the full funding, it's not -- it only saves us time going back through the process to do those other steps. However, as with all these projects with design, we have been bringing them back to both the Redevelopment Authority Citizens Committee and the board before things go for design and construction. And we would certainly do that or have done that with the full funding anyway, but if it's the Redevelopment Authority Board's pleasure, we'll just authorize the $5,000 for design now and come back for the rest later. As talking to the city engineer in the contract that you approved earlier, there is a line item for this in that design work. So, if this is funded, it stays in, and if it's not funded, then it can come out. So, I think that's kind of a summary of it, what the action is, and I'd be happy to take questions at this time.
I've got a question first. Where's the location for this signage?
So, that's something that needs to be looked at as part of the design. As they're doing the design work on the street, they need to identify a location. And I think generally speaking, we're talking about certainly the section from Fairview north to Fifth Street, maybe even looking up towards Stewart Street, but something that, as that project goes in, that says, you know, historic downtown, whatever it might say, something to capture that and to be an entry point into downtown or some other type of signage. But I think that needs to be worked out through the design and through the public outreach, through the other design process, too, to get some -- to come up with some alternatives and develop that plan.
Board questions? Lori?
So, a little bit along the line of what Karen was asking. So, if we're going to do the $5,000 in design first, it's just thought processes. Does it make it easier if we approve the up to $30,000 with the caveat that RAC has to approve? I'm just trying to say, is there any step savings, but we put the requirement on that there has to be an approval? Because I think RAC was correct, if that makes sense, what I'm saying. Or does it really matter, because we're going to get the whole design anyway, and so are they? So, it's -- because I want to honor what they recommended, but if there's a step I can save, I'd like to do that, too.
Yeah, Dan Stuckey, City Engineer, for the record. Yes, I believe that what you're proposing would be the way to go. It's from a designer standpoint, it's nice to tell them ultimately what the construction cost of that sign will be when they're designing, so they know it's going to be $25,000 construction rather than a $10,000 construction. So, yes, I believe that's a good proposal.
Brad?
All right. I totally disagree. I want to see the design first. I don't want to approve construction money, or at least my preference is not to approve construction money, number one, without seeing the design, the location, or having an estimated cost of the design. So, I'd rather have them come up with the design first and maybe tie this into arts and culture and maybe see if we can get some artists on board, see if they want to be involved in this, come up with some designs. Maybe they can help do some fundraising. There's a lot of things that we haven't explored here yet, and so I'm only going to be agreeable to do the design contract, and we'll deal with the construction when we know more about what it is that we're being asked to approve.
Board comments? John?
What Brad said.
And I would have to concur with that, that process, too. I don't want to limit what we're doing, but I also want to expand how we get there. So, including arts and culture in this would probably be a good move. So, thank you. Any public comment?
Can I just comment?
Lori?
So, I just want to be clear. That means the design team is designing whatever they think with no constraint? I'm just trying to get clarity, because I understand that option out there, but then I might get a $100,000 sign.
Here's my thought on this. They know what the pot of money is, all right? But to that end, that their design is, well, perhaps this, or we could go here. But to start opening up the Pandora's Box in terms of where we might go with this. That historic downtown signage is important, and I think it needs to reflect who we are and what we are in terms of how that signage looks.
And I would -- yeah, that -- well, exactly, Lori. I think that for $25,000, yeah, I might be more inclined to say no sign than approve and, in my mind, waste the $25,000 on a sign that we don't like and doesn't function well.
Should we even -- I think that's a great actual point, because every sign I was ever involved in in my businesses, that wouldn't even have been a -- that's a drop in the bucket for a sign. So, is the better discussion, should we even have the sign designed at this point, or wait and do more in line with what you're saying?
I think it has to be, for anything, and I'm going to wear my arts and culture hat right now. You have to start somewhere, and it's got to engage Public Works and engineering and all the rest of that. It has to meet a certain standard. Speaking for Mark Salinas, he would have to engage with them anyway if there's an artistic expression to this. So, we have to start somewhere, and that design process has to be initiated. So, I can see approving the $5,000 for that reason.
Yeah, and I'd like to say, I don't know if it's true. I think everybody in this board knows, but there is some confusion, because on the same night that RAC -- and I happen to be the Board's RAC liaison member. The overarching sign was brought before us, and there were some people who looked at it, and then we moved right into talking about this. I think there was some confusion there. So, I would like to -- that's why I was talking about, let's see the design first, because I wanted to make sure we weren't mixing apples and oranges here. I also wanted to get my question answered regarding the process and why this wasn't part of the landscaping. I think that's been answered, but at any rate, it just seems to me kind of odd that they were separated, and that just may have been inadvertent, or it may have been the usual government works in a piecemeal fashion sometimes. That's not bad, but it doesn't always suit our purposes. Thank you.
So, okay, I have the line inside of the other contractor that's going to consider designing for $5,000 a proposed sign. So, I really believe if your intent is to involve the Cultural Commission and some others, I think you might be on to something there, then I don't believe we should put the $5,000 in the other design contract, because they're just going to design when they're doing all of the other work with the landscaping and everything. Should it be pulled out as just a, here's $5,000 and work on the sign as a separate work with the Cultural Commission? I'm just asking you guys. You have to help me there. I'm not seeing the process working the way in my mind. So, help me out there.
So, talking about here, Darren can weigh in. So, an alternative, I appreciate that, that a $25,000 sign might not be the sign we want. What we're talking about is, so if you can allocate this and have direction, we can bring it back at 30% design with some alternatives that, at your direction, could include signs that are larger than $25,000 for which we might have to delay and construct and pay for later, but maybe in the end, a more appropriate gateway signage. But we still need -- but it would still need to be in the contract now for the design work, for Design Workshop, to do that, to bring it back at 30%. But if the direction is to look at a wider range of alternatives, they can certainly do that.
How does that get us to the Cultural Commission, working with the design team? I guess I was more concerned of the process flow of the other contract. That's all.
Darren Schultz, Public Works, for the record. We can have the Cultural Commission work while we're doing this design, but $5,000 is the right amount if you want a $30,000 sign. If we want a $150,000 sign, $5,000 is not going to design it. So, what I think maybe what we're coming to here is, why don't we put $5,000 for some conceptual designs of maybe three different levels of signs? A $30,000 sign, a $100,000 sign, and a $200,000 sign, and then look at some possible funding alternatives and ultimately bring that back. Because it's not that design, that level of design, that cost is going to change as the sign ratchets up. The signs that we put, the welcoming signs, Carson City, I mean, if some of you are around those, were $175,000 each. So, I mean, that has solar, lighting, et cetera. So, depending on the scope, it could get a little crazy. So, why don't we just do that? It sounds like that's what we're hearing, is let's do some conceptual sign designs for $5,000, and then we'll bring that back to both RAC and here and see where it goes.
I think that's a good way to proceed. I do want to make clear, though, that we are not talking about arch signs at this juncture. If the money goes up, there are people who are going to come and say, "Oh, well, it's money for signs." We're talking about a different animal here. Thank you.
Lori?
Oh, my gosh. I'm going to pull a John. So, I am. I've got one. I'm like, you know, if we get up to a $250,000 sign, that takes the money out of roads. There isn't places to go get neat new signs. So, I guess I'm more questioning, is today the right time to be working on a sign design that we don't necessarily have any funding to do? And I really believe that a $25,000 sign is not something we want to do. I mean, I'm not seeing the value in giving me three models or three sign designs that I know I only have $25,000 to buy. I don't have the rest of the money, because I want to do roads.
When I said that, Lori, that my intent was not to come and ask for $250,000 of roads money. It was to, as part of the process with the Arts and Culture, is to look at possible grants or possible other funding sources. I'm not here to suggest that we're going to, you know, we would take money out of a streets project to build a sign. That's not -- wasn't my intent.
And I get that. I'm just trying to say, with all the grants, all the things that we're looking to do, I'm just not convinced a sign is on the priority. I think I'd almost rather see the street complete and then make sure the vision is even right. I think sometimes, when you see something in reality, you get more people involved, and then they can go, hey, this will fit better there. So, I just don't believe this is the right time, but I could...
Brad?
Well, I think that if we're designing a street and we're going to add signage, we need to know where the electrical is going to go, where the cabling is going to go. This is the time. This is the time, yeah, this is the time to design the location, and yeah, so...
And I appreciate the discussion on all of this, and yes, we have to define the location. And the thought process is this, and wearing my designer hat, I get this process. You've got to get this started. And then, at some point, we have this design, this design, or this design. We decide the rationale behind that, and if you can engage the Arts and Culture Commission and some of our welding artists and people that are out there, I mean, we can come up with something that's really a signature for our community. So, I really do think that we need to initiate the process, and you don't have to spend $250,000 on a sign.
So, I think we -- so, you really believe we need a sign? Okay.
Sounds like we have sort of a plan.
Anything else, gentlemen, you'd like to add? Okay. Is there any public comment? All right, then I'll bring this back to the board. Nick, do you have something to say?
No, ma'am.
All right, I'll bring this back to the board.
All right, I'll take a shot at this. I move to approve and recommend that the Board of Supervisors authorize the expenditure of up to $5,000 from the fiscal year 2018 redevelopment revolving fund downtown entry signs account to create conceptual designs of potential downtown gateway signage in conjunction with the South Carson Street, Carson City Gateway Project as an expense incidental to the carrying out of the redevelopment plan that has been adopted by the Carson City Board of Supervisors and based on the findings that there is a causal connection between this redevelopment effort and the need for the expenses. The expenses are needed to ensure the success of the redevelopment plan and that the amount of the expenses that are given are minor in comparison to the money required for the overall redevelopment plan and directs staff to engage the Arts and Culture Commission as part of the design team.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Is there any additional public comment at this time? Seeing none, then, we will adjourn as the Redevelopment Authority, and I'll turn the gavel back to the mayor.
I'm going to call the media and the Board of Supervisors back to order. We're now at Item Number 25. This is a corollary matter to the one we just heard under redevelopment. So, unless there's a rejection, we will incorporate by reference all of the prior comments and discussion with respect to this issue for this agenda item. Is there anything else to be added? Anybody? I don't see any. Let's take a motion and then see where it goes. And this requires a two-thirds vote of the board.
Resolution number...
2018R3.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2018R3 authorizing the expenditure of up to $5,000 from the fiscal year 2018 redevelopment revolving fund downtown entry signs account to design, to create conceptual designs for a potential downtown gateway signage in conjunction with the South Carson City, Carson City Gateway Project as an expense incidental to the carrying out of the redevelopment plan that has been adopted by the Carson City Board of Supervisors and based on the findings that there is a causal connection between this redevelopment effort and the need for the expenses. The expenses are needed to ensure the success of the redevelopment plan and that the amount of the expenses to be given are minor in comparison to the money required for the overall redevelopment plan and directs staff to engage the Cultural Commission as part of the design team.
Further discussion on the motion? Motion second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
No.
Okay. Let's take up -- motion passes with two-thirds majority. Okay, let's take up Item 25 Bravo. This is the ordinance related to the appointment of planning commissioners. Anything new on this, Lee, on second reading?
This is second reading of the ordinance. We haven't had any further comments since first reading of the ordinance.
Any members of the public? Okay. Board, want to try a motion? The electronics went out, so we're now stuck.
Reboot.
Reboot.
Do it the old-fashioned way?
We'll go in the parking lot now.
Proceed with -- good point, actually.
Yeah, all right. On the motion?
I'll make the motion. Is it...
Yeah, go ahead.
2018R4?
Three.
Three. I thought the last room was three.
This is an ordinance, not a resolution.
So, it's R3?
Yes.
Not R3, just three.
Just three.
It's an ordinance. It should be an R.
No R.
No R. Just three.
Just three.
Got it. I move to adopt on second reading Bill Number 104, Ordinance Number 2018-3, and ordinance relating to zoning, amending Title 18 of the Carson City Municipal Code, Chapter 18.02, Section 18.02.010, to amend the process of appointing members to the Carson City Planning Commission and making various technical and structural changes to the existing provisions of Section 18.02.010.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Okay, let's take up Item 25 Charlie. This is another second reading one. This is to amend Title 18 of the Carson City Municipal Code to include two parlors as a conditional use... as a conditional use in the retail commercial use district. Anything new since the first reading?
I would just like to point out that at the board's direction, the applicant has, we've processed the applicant's special use permit. It was reviewed by the planning commission at their meeting last night and approved contingent upon this ordinance being approved on second reading today.
Good, very good. Public comment? Board, we ready? Let's take a motion on this, we're still in the dark here. Somebody got the paper motion?
This is four? Okay. I move to adopt bill number 103, I don't have the other paper, 2018-4 for the, on second reading and ordinance amending Title 18 of the Carson City Municipal Code to include tattoo parlors as a conditional use in the retail commercial use district.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Okay. I don't know where we are on the electronics, but let's, let's take up item 26. Need time? Who's going to do this? Dan, Mr. Stuckey? Oh, you've got a whole crew coming up. Okay. Need time to set up?
I think we're ready to go.
All right, we'll see how the electronics works over there. Okay, this is an oral, this is a presentation for discussion only to, on the progress of the city's asset management program. We have Mr. Stuckey, Ms. Hicks, and Mr. Lawton here today.
Good morning, board, Mr. Mayor. So I'm Dan Stuckey, city engineer for the record. I'm joined by Stephanie Hicks, the real property manager, and Matt Lawton, our GIS and asset manager. Today, we're going to give our, I guess, our annual update on the status and what we've done with the asset management program here in Carson City. Asset management, it's across the country, it's a huge push for all municipalities, it's a real focus, it's a big focus here and it's a priority. And it's refreshing to have a board that understands the importance of asset management. And really, you know, the vision that you, the board had a year and a half or two years ago to implement this program, you know, we think we've done a really good job of progressing that. And so we'll give an update on, on what we've done, I guess, this past year, what our plan is for the future, and then ultimately, some of the decisions that maybe will be coming up here soon as far as software solutions and that. So with that, we'll get started. You know, really, as we progress the asset management program, we're always focusing on kind of the four pillars of really the goals and benefits of asset management. There they are up on the, the presentation there. But really moving from more of a reactive decision-making to a proactive will really, really benefit our assets. Also, you know, as you understand your assets, you're going to minimize risk and really, you know, you know where your risk of failure is within your assets, you know the consequence of risk. And with limited funds, you can kind of tailor your improvements to really the best possible way you can spend your money to improve your infrastructure. Obviously optimizing customer service, the better assets, the better you, you know, the infrastructure is, the more quality of infrastructure, you're going to have better level of services, service for the residents of Carson City. And then I think really the last bullet is, is really the focus of asset management is having data-driven decisions. You know, you're collecting a lot of data, you're making decisions that are data-backed. And really, this is, this is a great thing because ultimately, when we come to the board for CIPs, you know, they're backed by data. And it's more transparent to the public is, too, is why we're making these decisions. Here's just a, and you guys have seen this before in the past, kind of the typical asset management cycle there. I'm not going to go over the specifics, but I think the important thing to remember here, and you all know this, but it is not a project. It doesn't have an end date. I mean, this is something, it's cyclical, it's a program, it's going to go on forever. And really, as technology advances, it's going to have to be very adaptable as well. So asset management in 20 years is probably going to look very different than asset management today. But it's just important that this is a never-ending process. With that, I'll, as we go through these next 10 slides, or there's more than that, but we're going to focus on infrastructure asset management and kind of the various, what we've done across all those asset systems. And with that, I'll turn it over to Stephanie to talk about facilities.
Thank you, good morning. I'm, I'm pleased to report and provide you some updates on what we've been doing with our building facilities as well as our parks and where that is taking us in our overall asset management program. Last year, we reported that we had implemented a very cost-efficient, effective software that we're using, it's called Smartsheet, to set up our condition assessments, our preliminary condition assessments for all of our buildings across the city. So we have done that with over 92 of our buildings. And what our goal was for 2017 was to quarterly revisit these, which we have accomplished. But taking that just a step further, what we are attempting to do is revisit these every time we go out on a work order for a particular building. And so that's allowing us to really make this be part, you know, asset management needs to be part of our day-to-day operations, it needs to be our business practice, not something that we do on the side or that is an afterthought, but something that's part of every decision that we make. So we have been incorporating the information that we find when we go out for particular work orders into our initial condition assessments. Another objective that we met this year was we, I know earlier, we had a conversation about the ERP and moving to, to new software. And prior to June of this year, the HT system was our primary work order system for facilities maintenance. In June, we transferred to a request tracker program, which is actually the same program that information technology uses for their help desk when they have issues with our technology. It has become a very efficient, and again, because it was a software that the city already owned, it didn't cost us anything to make that transition, but it's become a very efficient way for us to manage our work orders for our facilities. We were able to go from essentially printing out hard copies of our work orders that would be distributed out by hand to staff in the morning for all of our staff to be able to access the queue of work orders online through either their phone or through an iPad while they're out in the field. That just has made our business practice much more efficient, but it also allows them to take a look at requests that may have come in after they left the office that morning. And if they happen to be at that building, they can pull that work order into their queue and take care of more than one thing at a time. They're also able to more accurately track the time they're spending at each building. We've been able to additionally attach materials costs to our, our work order system and also be able to provide some reporting that we didn't have before. So the screenshot that you see up there for Power BI, oh, and one more thing actually is we can schedule preventive maintenance through the request tracker, which actually is a really big advantage for us. But the Power BI dashboard allows us to take all of this data that's being entered into the work order management system and now have some ability to see that data and utilize it. Real time, we're able to pull up the number of tickets for any particular timeframe, it can be for that day or it can be for the last six months. We can see how many hours our staff are spending at which different facility. And that allows us to break things down. If we wanted to look particularly at City Hall and see what type of tasks we are working on, it can break it down. And this is really just kind of a high level because actually you can click onto each of those. And if you want to see maybe what are those heating issues going on at City Hall specifically, you can click on that and it'll actually take you into the work order through the system. So it's a really dynamic system. And then it also allows us to take a look at our staff time and what they're doing, what type of tickets they spend the majority of their time on. What we've been able to find, and a way that we've been able to utilize this among many ways, is that, you know, sometimes we're going out to a site to do something over and over again, and maybe that preventative maintenance is actually starting to cost us more than it would to actually be costing us to replace that component or subcomponent of a system. So again, the data is now becoming available to us so that we can make smart decisions as we move forward. Another objective that we have for this year is to update our roof assessments. We have a condition assessment that is provided to us by Garland that was last updated in 2016. And what we've come to know is that this really needs to be reviewed every two to three years, so we're falling right into that cycle. They do a very detailed report for us. They go out and they visit each of our facilities and they provide us an inspection report that provides us details about what the components of the roof are, what materials, and what sorts of conditions the roof is in. They also document that through photographs that all go into the report. And most importantly, they provide us solution options and a cost estimate for those so that we can project those out five, 10 years and know, know where we're headed. This year, we're going to take an additional step. We, we know that we've had some deferred maintenance issues with our roofs. And we have some roofs where we go out repetitively to look at, at leaks. And we've, we've kind of narrowed those down to roofs that have a wooden substructure. And so Garland is going to assist us this year with a more in-depth assessment where we're going to go to those individual buildings. We will be able to do some core sampling to see if there's any issues underneath the surface that we can't see visually. We will also try to access and inspect from underneath. But they have offered to also provide us a thermal image, thermal scanning, to see if there's any areas where moisture is building up. And so that will give us an idea if there's something more going on that we need to plan for and inspect further. The best part is.
Stephanie, will the thermal imaging also show any potential water damage or dry rot?
It's, it's looking for the moisture, so I'm not 100% sure, but we can, we can certainly ask them that question.
Yeah, I would think it would because the rot generates heat, so it should show up.
Should show up.
Yeah.
And the best part of this is it's all free to us. This we, we determined was part of our, our contract with them currently, so this isn't going to cost us anything additional for them to provide this service. The Parks Department has also actively been now utilizing Smartsheet so that they could build their park inventory and create the database. So their database is completed at this point, which was a 2017 objective. This next year, what they're going to do is go back through and they're going to complete their initial condition assessment for each of their facilities. And again, you know, this is just a, a way that we've been able to utilize a cost-efficient solution to just gain momentum forward in our program. We did talk some last year about how important, and it actually is one of our goals, for a reserve study to be completed for the city. Last year, we talked about what that potential reinvestment need was, looking at some figures of a 5% reinvestment in our general fund assets. We projected that we had, you know, a pretty substantial gap in, in what our fundings are to have, you know, truly sustainable infrastructure. This year, this, this last year, our goal or our objective was to initiate the reserve study. And we've done quite a bit of research on firms and vendors that can provide this information. We've also obtained some initial cost estimates, so we know where to go as our next step. What those reserve studies will actually provide to us is they will have professional engineers come out, visit each of our buildings and park facilities, and they will do a very detailed assessment, which we'll be able to take and build upon in our Smartsheet and with our condition, initial condition assessments. They provide us a complete report for each of our buildings and they will project the information out over 20 years, which it will be very important for us in order to determine what our sustainable, sustainable funding levels need to be. So our objective for this year will be to issue an RFP to select a firm to perform the reserve study. Real recently, and so we haven't updated this slide, is there may be some potential for some vendors that are through some of the joiner contracts that we have, which will help us realize an even better cost savings on, on the services they can provide. So we may, there may be an opportunity for us to do it that way instead of an RFP. And so the goal of this slide is really just to, to summarize what we, what our hopes are for the reserve study. Essentially, the green line being our sustainable funding level. That projection out over 20 years of what our maintenance costs and replacement costs will be, as well as additional capital projects, is going to help us identify how we can prolong the life of our infrastructure by, by doing the proper maintenance ahead of time so that we are not spending more money in the future. We know that these cost estimates are generally going to be good for about seven to eight years. So it is something that, you know, it is not going to be a one-time thing, we will have to look at it again. But with that being said, there are some opportunities, and Matt's going to go into this a little more detail further in the presentation, but there are some opportunities and some of the things that we are looking at to integrate towards an enterprise asset management system. Because that's going to be where we have that dynamic, real-time opportunity to take our work order information and put it into our capital forecasting so that instead of having to do this every seven or eight years, we can continue that projection by the real-time data that we're entering on a daily basis.
So on the sanitary sewer side, a big accomplishment in 2017 was the completion of the sanitary sewer master plan. And this focused on the collection system. There was a couple, it was kind of a two-part master plan. One of it focused on building a hydraulic model that analyzed the system and identified where there's capacity deficiencies and developed future CIPs to address those, as well as it's a, you know, it's a working model that can analyze the impacts from future development and how that impacts our sewer system. So it's a very valuable tool for us. On the asset management side, they really focused on building workflows and recommendations in the model to, to help with the inspection and condition assessment, which really feeds into kind of our 2018 objective, is to initiate our sewer condition assessment program. We recently acquired a van that does the, the videoing of the inside of the sanitary sewer pipe. You know, it looks for, you know, where there's, you know, cracks and, and other deterioration of the pipe. And our staff has been trained in kind of a standardized scoring system that rates each of those pipelines. And so, you know, asset management, that'll all feed into, you know, not only preventative maintenance, but also future CIP forecasting for our sewer system. One thing that the master plan did tell us is based off, you know, the city staff that we have, our sewer maintenance staff, to assess our entire system, it would take roughly probably 10 to 15 years for 200, I mean, we have 250 miles, miles of sewer pipe in our system. And so one of the ways, just because we, we think it's a priority to really get a better grasp on our system, we are planning on issuing an RFP probably actually this month to have somebody, a contractor who's specialized in sewer condition assessment to kind of speed up that process. And we think probably roughly five to seven years, we will have our entire system assessed. And this isn't just pipelines, but also manhole inspections as well. On the stormwater side, we are very much in the asset inventory stage. So how we've done this is we've broken up our stormwater system kind of into various watersheds. I think there's about 26 throughout the city. So the red poly or area there is storm, what we're doing right now as far as on our asset inventory side. So this is, you know, doing field visits, talking, you know, to our staff, city staff, as well as looking over plans and kind of building the mapping of our GIS inventory and also the attributes that go along with, you know, catch basins and pipes and manholes and ditches and all that. The, the orange highlighted area is what we're planning on doing next fiscal year and then in 2019, we're planning on doing the remainder of, of our stormwater system. So complete full GIS inventory by the end of 2019. On the transportation side, one of the big accomplishments this last year is the update of our pavement condition assessments, so the pavement survey. So this is where, you know, the van drives around and looks at kind of crack density and the width and depth of those cracks and provides a standardized score for all of our streets across Carson City. So that's that pavement condition index, the PCI score. So that helps with, you know, planning, transportation planning, what, you know, kind of giving us a master plan of what streets we're going to improve with our money. So that, we're currently reviewing that data right now, but hope to have finalized soon. 2018 objective is just, you know, continuing to update our ownership maps for our streets. And then another big objective is we're federally required to provide a certain level of retro reflectivity on our signage across the city. So this is, you know, when you're driving at night, how well the sign is reflects with lights and all that, especially in an aging demographic like Carson City, it's very important. So that's one of our goals for this coming year is to, is to do that, that inventory and assessment of our, of our signage. Here, you, you have seen this before, I think we presented it the last time, but this is kind of our timeline to implement this. And as I mentioned with that, the cycle, I mean, it's, there's no fixed end date or anything. I mean, this continues forever, but kind of our, our initial, we're, as you've seen, we're very much accomplishing, accomplishing those asset inventory and condition assessment tasks. We've already seen some benefits from that in far, as far as our capital improvement planning, using that data to, to have better planning decisions. So we've already seen the immediate benefit of the asset management program. But we're kind of getting to a point where we have a lot of data and we're moving it along, but we're starting to now need kind of some software solutions to help. we're starting to now need kind of some software solutions to help, you know, better that CIP forecasting, implement a work order management, and just improve the overall asset management program. And so Matt's going to talk a little bit about that.
Thank you, Dan. Good morning. Matt Lawton, Asset Manager for Carson City Public Works. We've really grounded our asset management program in our geographic information system for the city, which is where the industry is going and is currently, you know, living really in GIS, because that location component is so important for asset management. To that end, we've been working with one of our GIS consultants, Michael Baker International, for the past eight or nine months to develop our GIS strategic plan. They helped us craft a vision statement, and they provided several recommendations specific to our GIS program. A couple of those feed right into what we're doing for asset management. The development of our enterprise asset management roadmap, really what that is heading toward is a comprehensive platform for asset management, a software solution essentially, and I'll speak more specifically about that in a moment. And also to further leverage our mobile GIS solutions, which also directly feed into our asset inventory and condition assessment. The next slide shows one that we've actually deployed as of the end of last year. This was a sanitary sewer manhole inspection application that we built and implemented after the master plan was completed. This is actually out in the field right now, and staff is using it to gather information about the condition of our manholes. So it's providing both an application for inventory as well as a condition assessment of those manhole assets. The next slide shows an off-the-shelf ESRI solution for doing a sign inventory. As Dan mentioned, that's one of our upcoming objectives, is to get a better handle on our sign inventory and condition assessment. So we're actually going through a GIS platform upgrade right now that's going to allow us to more easily implement these template solutions from our GIS vendor, so that we can feed this data into GIS and therefore into the larger asset management solution. I've also been working very closely with our neighbors. We're actually, you know, very much on par with what other regional players are doing with asset management. Some of them have already implemented asset management solutions, some of them are evaluating. So it's been very beneficial to compare notes with other players in the region and get, you know, an idea of what they're doing with their software evaluations, implementations, getting feedback on what's working for them, what isn't working. So we had our first meeting in December. We're going to meet again next week, so we're trying to get together every quarter and kind of just share knowledge and learn from each other as we all head down the asset management path. So an asset management software platform, getting an enterprise solution for infrastructure asset management is really where we're headed very quickly. We've done, as Stephanie mentioned, you know, a lot with using Smartsheet, these low and no-cost solutions, Request Tracker. But at a certain point, we can only go so far with those solutions. We really need a comprehensive enterprise platform to feed this information, just to reap the benefits of the reporting of the capital forecasting. The inventory has to reside somewhere, the condition assessment has to reside somewhere. So certainly, you know, we're considering multiple options of where this may go. As you're aware, we now have an ERP deployment that's going to get underway, and there most certainly will be asset management components within that ERP system. In fact, Tyler is currently working on an asset management product, so we certainly want to evaluate that and leverage that if it's the right solution for us. But we don't want to have tunnel vision either. We want to make sure that we're selecting the right option for Carson City, the right solution for our needs. So there's also a variety of larger vendors out there that specialize in enterprise infrastructure asset management solutions. They typically come at a larger cost, but, you know, there's a lot of names in the industry that some of our neighbors that I mentioned earlier are using. So we want to definitely keep the door open for evaluating those solutions if those are going to be a good fit for us. And another option is finding best-in-breed solutions. So there's a lot of software platforms out there that are really good at facilities management or fleet management. So it's possible we might bring together a group of offerings that are specific to those needs, but that we can integrate together into a larger asset management platform. So those are really kind of the three levels that we're evaluating when we move toward looking at specific software solutions for asset management. So an objective that we have for the next fiscal year is to bring in a consultant to help us guide us through this process. There are several out there that have expertise in this area for municipal government. So we want them to help us identify our requirements, talk to our stakeholders so that we know what our needs are internally, and then help us craft requests for information so we can see what the vendor offerings are that are out there, how they match up to those needs, and then ultimately issue that RFP to start evaluating the solutions for an asset management platform. And we can't overlook the employee resources that are required. As I said, you know, asset management is really growing out of our GIS. We currently have two on-call consultants that provide GIS services for the city. They're essentially providing about one and a half full-time equivalent staff for GIS and asset management needs, more so GIS needs. So another objective we have for the next year is to bring in a full-time GIS technician to kind of absorb some of those GIS tasks, the routine map request, departmental support, staff support, data requests, so that we can really open the door for tasking those consultants with more asset management responsibilities. And then we have to also consider the future staffing needs to support asset management beyond GIS support. You know, once we do get into the implementation of a larger asset management platform, there very likely are going to be staff needs and expertise for supporting that system as well. So that's something to look at on the horizon. So with that, that concludes our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions?
Brad.
This asset management program is one of the major reasons why I've been sitting in this seat for the last six years. And I think that this program is every bit as visionary as Carson City's purchasing water rights in the 80s and changing the way that we did business for our infrastructure program. This will change the way that we conduct business, right at our very foundation. So, you know, I am really excited about this program and the work that you've been able to implement so far. This is going to create efficiencies, it's going to make it easier for us to plan long-term, it will at some point in the future relate to considerable savings. So the final component of implementation in this program is going to be to find the dedicated funding sources that have to be set up to pay for this. But I just want everybody to keep in mind that over the long term, over the 30, 40, 50-year horizon, this will save us a lot of money and a lot of man-hours, and in fact, is the way that we should be conducting our business. So, you know, I just want us to keep that in mind going forward, because we have to find the money to be able to implement this. And, you know, I would like it to be fully implemented in the next two years, frankly.
Why is that? We've got questions from the board. Let's go this way from John to Karen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I want to thank Darren, who's overseas, and the three of you, Matt, Stephanie, Dan. Wonderful job. I don't have questions, I just want to echo what Brad said and hopefully say it as well. One of the reasons that I've been interested in government all my life, besides the fact that my parents spoon-fed me at the dinner table, is that government has a tendency to be reactive rather than proactive on things like this. We need to look 50 years ahead. We need to look 100 years ahead if we can figure out how to do it. There's no way to know the future, but there sure is, heck is a way to plan for it. So thank you, all of you who've been working on this, including Brad, who's I think spearheaded much of it.
So I've really been thinking about this, and I serve on several other committees. And at the Audit Committee, a week or so ago, we've really been looking at strategic planning, performance-based budgeting, and we kind of, one of the statements I made, it's really about driving decisions from the top down. And so I really would like this presentation given to the Audit Committee, because I think some of the work we did there kind of has gone by the wayside, because this has replaced it. And so I'd really enjoy an opportunity for this presentation to be made at the Audit Committee, to see that the board seriously takes the role of budgeting and that we're moving to a data-driven, maybe not a performance-based in the typical way, but that we're moving to a data-driven decision model for budgeting. So if I can have this at the Audit Committee, I think it would be very beneficial for that group, and nice job. Thank you.
I thank you for all your hard work on this as well, because it is invaluable. The question I have, and Matt, probably to you, the hiring an FTE as a GIS technician, is there a cost savings as opposed to these on-call folks that you've been relating to up to this point? Can you just elaborate on that a little bit?
Yes, certainly. You know, our consultants, you know, they're not inexpensive by any means, so, you know, we're looking to offset the utilization of those resources with the FTE. One benefit of having the consultants on-call is that they provide a variety of expertise, so it's not merely a data technician or solely a programmer, they're able to provide a gambit of services for us. So we still want to have those resources available, but we certainly have a lot of requests that an FTE would be able to meet, having them on-staff and available.
It's a more cost-effective approach going forward?
Yes, certainly, because, you know, right now, either myself or the consultants have to pick up that work, so having somebody who's able at a GIS technician level to do GIS technician work is certainly more cost-effective for the organization.
Anybody else? It's a fascinating world, staff. And, you know, I caught myself thinking here, you know, going back to what John and I were talking about earlier, you know, is that, you know, a lot of things moving real quick with digital technology and the internet and all that stuff. Sometimes it's difficult to get your arms wrapped around what all this means. And I think that, you know, this program does a pretty good job, not a pretty good job, but excellent job of, you know, giving a discreet analysis of what actually taxpayers have bought in the city and what we need to do to protect those assets going forward. And, you know, I want to thank the board members, and I know Brad was instrumental in putting this, getting this going, and others were here too, and Lori, and I can't remember who else was on here, Karen, you know. And I think, you know, going to what Lori said, I'm not certain that, I think it'd be great to have this in front of the Audit Committee, but I'd still like to see performance-based budgeting, because I think there's a natural connection between the two. So, yeah, it's just my two cents, but I know you guys have a lot, a lot on your plate. But, you know, I'd like to think, you know, that Carson City, as small as we are, you know, what do we got, 57, 58,000 people now? You know, and I'm not bragging, because we're here in a board meeting, but I will brag a minute, you know, we're kind of ahead of the power curve on a lot of these things, you know, in terms of what's the newest way to approach effective decision-making in life. And I think we need to keep that up, and, you know, so, you know, the older I get, the more important I think that stuff is. Thanks. All right.
Mayor, if I may, just one more comment. I would be absolutely remiss if I didn't say that while I appreciate you thanking all of us that are sitting here before you, there are a lot of city staff behind the scenes that none of this would be possible if they weren't assisting us through it and supporting us through it. Our facilities maintenance staff has been incredible. Ron Reed and Tyler Sayer were, Saylor were the ones who brought up our work order management program through the Request Tracker. Parks and their Parks Maintenance Staff, as well as all of our Public Works crews out in the field, really have been instrumental, because we wouldn't have the data if they weren't helping us collect it. So we, I just want to pass that on as well.
You're married to a Marine, aren't you? Semper Fi. All right, that's pretty good. All right, anything else, board? Yes, go.
I just want to also say, because of the business I was formerly in, you are providing us with the tools longer term to find those funding sources that Brad was talking about. If we don't have this to take to the public, the public's going to say, "The heck with you." And they said that to us recently on another matter. I won't use the R-word, but you know what I'm talking about. But the truth of the matter is, we always have to sell these programs, because this is a community, and a community has to buy in. So thank you again.
All right. Anything else, anybody? Anybody want to weigh in? I don't see any. Thank you very much for everything. Go back to work now. Okay, all right. Do you need time? We're going to move on to Health and Human Services. Dustin, you guys, Nikki, I can't see her back there. You guys need time to set up? Are you ready to go? If we go to Health and Human Services, you ready?
One moment, Mr. Mayor.
Quick recess? Well, I'll have Iris come up to the table, but we just discovered that-
Okay, we'll take a quick recess after that.
We're going to take a quick recess right now?
Okay. Go ahead, Iris.
Okay. Unfortunately, we actually have to pull this item and the subsequent item, because there's a page missing from the business impact statement as it was published, I know.
We haven't had any problems with this, have we? There must be something wrong.
So, yeah.
Well, and the important part is that this page actually contains the meat of the findings of all the comments.
Well, it's just, it's about 25% of the actual business impact statement, which needs to be published for the public. So I don't know what happened, but it was not in the materials, so. So we'll see you next time.
Well, yeah, I know, this is a kind of second time we've had a hiccup. Better to do things right than, you know, take the brunt of it later. So let's just do it right. And the next Board of, State Board of Health is when?
It's in June, so it doesn't impact any-
So we're okay? I mean, what we're talking about now is implementation-
Yep.
-you know, for our local folks to know what's going on.
Yeah.
And I think they probably all know what's happening here.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Good. So-
The ordinance itself also, both items need to be pulled, so.
So we'll pull Item 27A and 27B for discussion next time. I don't know, it's looking like that next meeting's going to be a little stiff, a little We'll have a conversation about, you know, because I don't, I think we're going to have a number of things on there, but anyway, Nick, see if you can handle that, so we're not here four hours a day.
Timing-wise, as long as we meet the June deadline, I can work with you guys as far as when we're going to put it on. Thank you.
All right. Okay, let's take up Item 28. Board Supervisors Reports, anybody? Anybody got anything?
I got one thing.
Sure.
I want to say, Charlie and Karen, keep up the good work until you don't, but congratulations.
Yeah, you know, speaking of Karen, you know, she was out there at the, we did a promo for the Polar Plunge. That was Monday, you know, the sheriff was there, city manager, me, Karen, John. And part of that was getting wet, and I think I got the wettest, because somebody poured a whole bucket on me. But, you know, so you'll be able to see that YouTube video, but I want to thank all the board members who are there, you know, the, getting wets for a good, a good cause there. Also-
We were right behind you, Mr. Mayor. Literally, right behind you.
The Marines have always been there, right behind us, you know? I know, man.
Leading from behind.
Shouldn't we also thank the board members who were smart enough not to be there?
Yeah, smart enough, yeah, anyway. Yeah, and a couple other things. March 31st, there's a welcome home ceremony for Vietnam veterans, 5 o'clock at Mills Park, it's our annual one. And then June 1st, the Traveling Wall is coming to Minden. And then we'll have Memorial Day events happening on Memorial Day, which is the 30th or 29th, I think, of this year. I think that's about it in terms of stuff happening. Anybody? All right.
One quick item, Mr. Mayor, and really for the community. We haven't had a winter like we did last year, but if the residents reacquaint themselves with our status map, you could go right to carson.org, our homepage. Bottom of the homepage, you'll see a button, and it says Maps and GIS. Click that on, and then click on Status Map. Any type of road delays or impacts from what looks to be a pretty significant winter storm here, we'll have near-real-time information on our page. In the top right corner of that map, there's a-
In the top right corner of that map, there's another map that is provided through a collaborative effort of the Department of Transportation. Click on One Stop Shop if you're going to travel out of the area for the weekend or something like that, and it'll give you real-time traffic cameras, road conditions, all that type of stuff. So again, that's called One Stop Shop. I didn't come up with a name, unfortunately, but it's a, it's a very useful resource.
It's a good reminder. I mean, sometimes, you know, we get, it's funny how life is, you know, we don't have any winter, and then all of a sudden, somebody says, "Hey, you're going to get maybe a foot or two feet of snow." I said, "Come on." But anyway, it's a, it's a good reminder to do that, and so thanks for letting the public know that, because that's an excellent resource. All right, anybody else? We ready to recess, and then until we take up some appointments? Let's see here.
We're doing the RTC.
RTC.
And then we have the, the Culture and Tourism Authority modification to the inter-local at 1:30, or beginning at 1:30.
Right, okay, so let's be in recess then, unless there's anything right now. Let's be in recess until 1:30. We're recessed.